...of rooming house land use. Now, on behalf of the Planning Commission, I thank you for your attendance this evening and for the participation in the city's legislative process. Please understand that the Planning Commission's role is advisory to the City Council. The City Council will make a final decision on whether to adopt these ordinances as drafted or as revised, or whether to take no action on either ordinance. Following the close of public comment, the Commission will closely consider the comments made preceding, as well as written comments submitted for the record, before making any recommendations to the City Council. The City Council has discretion to hold a second public hearing before taking any action. Now, following the staff presentation and questions for the Planning Commission, I will open the hearing for public comment. Please respect several ground rules for the hearing. Here they are. We'll need you to start with your name and address for the record. If you can do it slowly and pronounce it, or renunciate it correctly, we'll be able to capture it for the record. To ensure that all are heard, please limit your comments to three minutes. We have an interesting little three-minute peg timer here, and I'm going to be timing these speakers so that we can get them to all of you. So when I turn this upside down, that will start the clock. When I turn the timer, I will begin, and I will request that you quickly conclude your comments at the end of three minutes. So if you get close, I'll give you the coordinates.
Draft ordinance A would amend the municipal code to allow rooming houses in the low-density, medium-density, and high-density residential designations, the historic business land use designation, and the commercial land use designation. More specifically, it would amend Title 14 of the Snohomish Municipal Code in the following ways: It would amend the definition section in Chapter 14, 100, to provide a definition for rooming house and related clarifying amendments. Would amend the land use tables in Chapter 14.207 to remove efficiency dwelling unit, dormitory, organizational hotel, lodging house, and congregate care as permitted uses, and add new use, including rooming house and institutional residence. Use conditions for rooming houses are also added to the chapter. The amendments would modify the dimensional and other requirements in Chapter 14, 210 to add a new section for rooming house regulations. Would amend the off-street parking regulations in Chapter 14, 235 to create an administrative modification process that would allow the city planner to reduce parking requirements on a case-by-case basis for unusual circumstances and based on a professional parking study of comparable land uses in comparable contexts. Parking code amendments would also increase the distance allowed for off-site, off-street parking for rooming house uses and other land uses from 200 to 800 feet. The current dormitory standard of one space per resident room is revised to apply to rooming houses. Unrelated to rooming houses, standards for, the standard parking stall dimension would also be revised for consistency with the prior ordinance. Finally, it would amend the park impact fee ordinance to establish a park impact fee rate for rooming houses. Ordinance B would not amend the municipal code, but would establish a discretionary process for approving selected rooming house projects within the single-family land use designation. If adopted, the ordinance would define the rooming house use, establish process for submission of rooming house proposals to the City Council for review. The City Council then could select zero, one, or more demonstration project for further review. Any selected proposals would be required to go through the standard conditional use permit process, except that the applicant would also be required to hold a neighborhood meeting for the neighbors within 500 feet. Finally, it would provide conditions of approval, including site and building design requirements and operational standards. Operational requirements would include a minimum rental period, require manager in attendance, provide an on-demand right of inspection, and require on-demand certification of ongoing compliance with conditions. We note that while much of the community discussion has focused on the property at 402 Avenue E, it should be understood that this neither ordinance, particularly the demonstration ordinance, is not site-specific. This means it has potential applicability to properties throughout the city. Similarly, the demonstration ordinance does not approve any use at 402 Avenue E. If ordinance B is adopted by the City Council, it would require separate council approval and hearing examiner approval to establish a rooming house use on this site. However, 402 Avenue E, like many other sites in the city, would be eligible to submit a proposal. A significant number of the public comments, both written and oral, have been made to date. All comments provided in letters and email, as well as comments made in public meetings, are part of the official record. Until the City Council takes action, the record will remain open for additional letters and emails to other public comment. All comments received will be forwarded to the City Council to inform its decision. For those unfamiliar with the Planning Commission and its responsibilities and authority, the Commission is a seven-member volunteer board, body of citizen volunteers, who are appointed by the City Council. The Commission advises the City Council on land use issues. Consistent with the practice of all city advisory boards and commissions, Vice Chair Josh Scott has recused from this hearing, as he has recused from all discussions of the parking amendments and the demonstration ordinance due to a professional interest in the outcome. That concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, sir. I believe we announce that each of the members in public comment, unless the council has any specific questions. Do you have any questions for staff?
I don't have a question, but I think just as far as just hold the closure, I would like to just let the other commissioners know that I was invited last Wednesday to meet with five residents of the city who are in opposition of this proposal. And I met with them, and I sent some of their concerns, and we're going to get all of your building and send a letter to their comments.
Thank you for your comment. Yeah, there it is.
Still having a difficult time hearing.
We're looking for comments from the commissioners at this time with regard to staff's presentation. And we just had a comment from the commissioner with regard to a meeting that she had with private citizens about this matter.
If it's necessary, I met with a couple of the citizens too, a few weeks ago. I think that's a normal part of this process, that we get contacted by folks that have concerns in the city. And I've heard from five or six by telephone, so.
Before disclosing, I've been barraged. And I haven't responded. And for myself, the last time I was barraged was this morning, because I was cooking breakfast, and the issue made me burn the butter. No, I appreciate all the comments that we have received. We've received letters from you all, and we've received some phone calls to individual commissioners and other officials in the city. And you're welcome to do that, as part of this process. Any other comments, staff, do you have? I think we shall begin. Are you ready to do this?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I heard 102, yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. This is the magic timer. Is there anyone in the audience right now that would like to come forward and make a comment with regard to these ordinances? Please let me remind you, there are, there's ordinance A and ordinance B, and you can speak on either one or both.
Mitch Cronelson and Artie McLean.
My name is Hank Eskridge. I live at 416 Avenue E. My concern tonight belongs to the two rooming house ordinances under consideration. I'm here to express my disapproval for this plan. I see them as detrimental to the character of this town, and also as unnecessary. A major rationale for this plan is that Snohomish does not have enough affordable housing for the single individual. Although it was ascertained with no particular evidence, other than a couple of anecdotal examples that were admittedly hypothetical anyway. There are a good many apartments in town in more cunning Snohomish State on Bigfoot Avenue, for example. With the state of rent of $400 to $500 for these tiny spaces likened to pods, I propose it is cheaper, more comfortable to share an apartment with one or two other individuals. Contrast that with the pod arrangement of sharing one kitchen, one water pressure, one garbage bin in a relatively small building. I believe that most would find the apartment a better choice, and more humane as well. Moreover, I think that the affordability argument put forward is disingenuous, favoring only the tenant owner. I don't think this is, this movement is needed at all. As well as unnecessary, they would be a detriment to any neighborhood where they are allowed. The podments compare with the apartments only superficially. With one kitchen, small living spaces, higher population per square foot, they are the very definition of overcrowded. And that can negatively affect the neighborhood in three ways: social, public services, and parking. Social effects of overcrowding are probably the most visible and most emotional. As a reasonable citizen, I can speculate that more noise and traffic will result, and perhaps more disturbances will cry out for this response. I don't know, but these are reasonable questions. City utilities will be affected. The city is required to provide services commensurate with its own designation, water supply, garbage, and the like. With a project like the one proposed, the city infrastructure burden would increase at least five-fold. How does that burden secur- upgrade it, and at what cost, and what is the effect to the existing neighborhoods' public services? Parking is an issue. Regardless of how our dwelling is designated, with 25 occupants, you're very likely going to have 25 apartment cars. Are our neighborhoods ready for this? I ask the Commission not to recommend this proposal.
Hank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mitch Cronelson, 331 Avenue F. This issue tonight is not about a single property. It is about the zoning in our entire city. I am here tonight to oppose both ordinances in their entirety, as they do affect our entire city. We, the residents of Snohomish, do not think our beautiful, livable city is an experiment. We do not believe that growing one demographic of the population that has already served in our code is a goal of our long-term planning. Who is here tonight in opposition to these ordinances?
Both of them. They're here.
And who is here tonight wadding both of these ordinances? Okay, thank you. These ordinances were initiated for the benefit of non-resident, non-occupant developers, not at the request of Snohomish residents. The original planning hearing date of March 5th would have occurred with no resident mailings and minimal newspaper notification addressed. We deserve more from our elected officials, who are supposed to serve the residents and not outside lobbying interests. The singles portion of our population is currently served by a code allowable for up to three rental rooms in an owner-occupied home. The development of high-density apartments creates competition to our current code and an unnatural concentration of a narrow rental demographic. The current rental room allowance in our code creates a more evenly distributed and neighborhood-friendly dispersion of singles throughout the community, supports homeowners, and is more self-policing due to the presence of owner-occupancy. Snohomish has never before considered the use of a demonstration ordinance. This highlights the extreme hynous nature of this usage. Well-thought-out planning processes with proper historical precedence do not require the use of demonstration projects, especially when they are creating spot zoning islands in the middle of single-family neighborhoods, or multifamily for that matter. This condition creates an unfair economic advantage to a single landowner while causing the destruction of even greater property value for surrounding properties, no matter whether adjacent zoning. The Council Planning Commission have a legal responsibility to protect the existing zoning. Current property owners have the expectation of consistency in land use against the proposals of outside interests that do not own or live in our community. Why do we skirt the issue of density in these ordinances? By not defining each rental space as a dwelling unit. This affords unprecedented occupant capacity, limited only by parking, which can be waived, or by building and lot size. It is feasible if facilities of over 50 persons could be built next to single-family homes or existing smaller parking buildings. This affords an unnatural cash flow advantage that will attract developers that have no interest in our community except to build and sell structures. Our city will be left to pick up the pieces as inevitable deterioration sets in.
Thank you, Mitch.
These ordinances were initiated for the benefit of non-resident, non-occupant developers, and I believe that common sense should prevail in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch.
Artie McLean.
Artie McLean.
23 Avenue E. I received a letter from...
Both ordinances?
Yes, both. Yes, both ordinances. I received a letter from a couple, and I thought I should share it with you, because this is the commission meeting, and I think you need to, there's some questions in it that you need to consider. It states, "Construct a common apartment with a common kitchen area, which could be one or more stories below or above your unit, and that has a kitchen which may contain a lock covered for your pots and pans and table service, food, etc. Know that the maximum size of the kitchen will be 100 square feet, or 15 square feet per person. This includes table, stove, refrigerator, sink, and dishwasher. Know that each unit is defined by the presence of a kitchen, so up to eight sleeping areas plus one kitchen will be considered a unit. Answer the question, does this unit definition keep the building below the threshold for design review and environmental review? Will the building be smoke-free? Will there be quiet hours? If there is no formal design review and environmental review, what standards or restrictions will the building have to adhere to? What will the monthly rent be, amount and conditions of deposit? Lease and penalty for breaking it, renting rates and practices? Compare these costs to your being per square foot to the cost per square foot in an average apartment already existing in Snohomish. Would you rather live in a standard apartment with a room eight or two, or in an apartment? Now assume that you are the investor apartment, apartment building owner. Pick a monthly rental cost. What will the monthly rental income be per square foot? How does this compare with the rental income per square foot in other types of rental housing already in Snohomish? Would you, as an investor or owner, live in one of these apartments? Why, or why not? The couple goes on to say, "We purchased a home on Avenue E in 2012. Our son lived in a Seattle apartment for approximately three months, beginning in October of 2012. Although the apartment building opened in October, a significant number of friends moved out by the end, by the end of the time he did. We write to encourage you to take the perspective of the tenant as you deliberate. No one support what you are asking the tenants to do, or stop this project. Do not view the demonstration project as some sort of compromise, because it is not. It is a victory for the investor. After having read the commentaries and meeting discussion notes, we are surprised at how the city officers did not examine and discuss the complaints, but proceeded as if all were positive. I fear that, as one writer said, 'You have become embroiled in the details, the options considered, and have forgotten that you have the power to stop this treatment of potential tenants now.' I am also puzzled that what..." That's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Artie McLean at 323 Avenue E. The apartments that are proposed on 402 Avenue E is about half a block away from our house. I'm a real estate agent by profession, and would describe that that building in that high density will directly affect market values of the surrounding homes, and it basically is just due to too many people living in this small area.
I forgot to ask you whether you're A, B, or... Oh, I'm sorry, law.
Thank you. A compromise would be to allow multifamily or condominiums in that area, Mr. Coe's building as the example, or sell it to single families. There are three single lots there, and that's what he chose to do. Second would be, as a compromise, would be that when I looked at your Pilchuck District proposal, the one that's been approved, I thought it was very well done, and would be open to have the idea of having higher-density apartments in that area, such as maybe not as small as an apartment, as an apartment, but something, as he had in compromise, so that you don't have as high a density as you have. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Give us the microphone.
My name is Colleen Dublin, and I live at 1614 Fourth Street. And I'm here to speak for both ordinance changes. I don't agree with either of them, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the need for parking versus the needs for public transportation. So theoretically, micro apartment living is for low-income residents. We've been told that they cannot afford cars, so parking is not needed. They will make use of alternate transportation. This theory is not credible. The importance for working people to have good transportation cannot be understated. Employers do not write their schedules according to the convenience of their employees. The scheduled public transportation for the city of Snohomish, I'm despairingly reading every time at every stop, from Snohomish Community Transit serves Everett to Monroe through Snohomish approximately once an hour. It begins at 5:53 a.m. and it ends at 8:00 p.m. The last bus to Everett is at 8:53. People working the graveyard shift are out of luck. Return buses to Snohomish for day shift workers leave Everett between 2:49 a.m. and 7:45 p.m. The last bus for Everett is at 8:00, some of Everett is at 8:45. Swing ship workers are out of luck. Anyone wishing to go to Everett for entertainment is out of luck, as most evening events begin at 8:00 and end much later than 8:45.
Thank you, Colleen.
I'm Coleman, and I live at 629 Avenue J. I'm talking about both ordinances. I lived for nearly 30 years at 219 Avenue E, so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I come at this from a social services point of view. I have 21 years of experience in currently working for a large social service agency in Everett. I wrote a letter, and most of you probably got a copy of it, and I'm going to read some of it.
A or B?
I'm sorry, I said both. I said both, you just didn't hear?
I missed.
All right. Establishing a rooming, I'm sorry. Establishing a rooming house, land in Snohomish, are they a good idea? No, they're a great idea, just not in Snohomish. They are great for urban areas like Tacoma, Seattle, Everett. They're great in places that cater to commuters who wish to have a place to stay in the city during the week, for students who are looking for inexpensive housing close to schools, even low-income transient populations who need to be able to be in rooming-type housing near jobs and social services. None, I repeat, none of these things apply in the city of Snohomish. Why is historical Snohomish allowing housing which is not conducive to the environment we have spent years cultivating? I understand we had some rooming houses years and years ago, but that's when we had Brickyard and 1,000 employees down at the mill. The environment of a small town, an historic town, a family town with single-family housing, with apartment buildings, and some lower-income apartments, and several small businesses, Snohomish is a nice place to come home to, a nice place to have your kids walk to school safely in, a nice place to walk your dog at night. And I firmly believe that starting down this slippery slope, this rezoning will allow to rooming houses, would create a bad rezoning for the city of Snohomish, and it will be bad in the long term for all of Snohomish. Do not change the zoning to add apartments. Leave the people who have a vested interest in the city of Snohomish a reason to benefit from this, and not, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Leave them to the people who have a vested interest in Snohomish, not the people who wish to come in just to make money. This type of high-density housing is great for the larger cities. We need to work properly to plan for the city of Snohomish in a way that profits the people of Snohomish.
Thank you.
Karen Tean, 418 Avenue G. I'll be referring to both ordinances. Having done extensive research on this issue since finding out about potential plans for 402 Avenue E, including how larger cities with much higher populations and urban density and the infrastructure to support such population density, are themselves struggling to understand the long-term implications of this type of development, I keep coming back to the question of why. The demographics of our city, according to the 2010 U.S. Census records, do not reflect in any sense a need for this in our community. We are predominantly comprised of families, 62%, and our median age is 37.8, with the largest population groups being between 40 and 54 years old. This is who we are. This is who pays taxes, shops in our local businesses, votes in our local elections. Of the over 4,000 residents with jobs living in our city, 3,300 drove to work, 200 took public transportation. And yet, one of the proposed ordinance changes reduces the number of apartment spaces required for apartments, because the developers have said their tenants don't drive cars. In fact, neighbors of existing apartments built in Seattle are right now struggling with tenants' cars, and tenants are actively applying for parking permits from the city. That there is a lack of affordable housing in Snohomish is a fact. Almost 57% of those who rent, and almost 50% of homeowners in our city are considered housing-stressed, spending 30% or higher of their monthly income on housing. Both the Housing Authority of Snohomish County and the Snohomish Affordable Housing Group have waiting lists of anywhere from three months to three to five years. According to Snohomish Affordable Housing Group, the most pressing need currently is for senior housing, followed by working families with minor children. Neither of these groups would be served by apartments. The argument has been presented that the city of Snohomish has an obligation to observe projected growth over the next 25 years under the Growth Management Act. Data states that we already have surplus capacity to accommodate that growth, and that is exclusive of any added density beyond the Pilchuck District. Given the previously mentioned demographics of our city, again, I have to ask why? Where is the research that shows there is a need in the city of Snohomish with the type of development that was created specifically to address housing issues in extremely larger urban areas?
Karen?
Yes.
418 H. Here's the microphone.
John Martin, 418 speaking. I'm vehemently opposed to both ordinances, and I would like to say that I've made a living in testing and experiments, and if this is a demonstration project, that means to me it's an experiment. An experiment is undertaken with metrics. You go along a way, you see if something works, if it doesn't. I don't see any plan, it's just, oh, well, we'll just do this. That doesn't work, because we had this 25, 30 years ago with this property, 402 E, that was now, it was promised at that time that it would be one thing, and it was promised to the people, that's why it was a demonstration project back then. What happened? So that the same thing can happen now? I'm going to thank you very much.
God, 407 Avenue C. And I'm opposed to both ordinances, but speaking mostly to the ordinance treaty. In a single-family area, this seems the worst place to put apartments, apartments are going to be going to put them at all. I was talking to a fellow who's a planning commissioner in another city, and the first thing he said to me, instant flop house. And, you know...
Say that word again.
Flop house.
Okay.
And, you know, you're going to tell the people that have no vested interest in And, you know, you're going to tell the people that have no vested interest in the city or their neighborhood, because there's going to be transient population, as designer populations, home values will definitely be affected in the neighborhood. And it seems to me there are a lot of good alternatives for low-income housing, it was dispersed well throughout the city, but this doesn't seem like a good alternative. I think a good way to approach it could be to have some kind of public planning process, and that's probably something the council has to say, you know, where you involve the community in planning how to really implement low-cost housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
I've been here for two years, and I'm just stunned by this proposal, very much against both amendments. I wonder, no one has mentioned the high schools just one block away with two thousand students. This is absolutely ridiculous to put this in beside teenage kids. You also must know that currently there are a lot of drug dealers and other undesirable people habitating this house currently. The council breaking in, the neighbors see it, they call the police. So, what are you doing? A bed and breakfast for drug dealers or kids? And what about the parking? It's ridiculous. Please, don't do this.
Nick Bender, 427 Avenue E. I'm going to get to the ordinances. Provide a different perspective. My wife and I specifically chose this town for what it is. We've lived all over the country, multiple places, both sides of the coast, all over, and then things like that. And what made us really like Snohomish itself was the thorough, historic homes, the small-town feel, the main street-type feeling downtown, things of that nature. My worry is that if these ordinances get passed, the uniqueness of the town will slowly deteriorate. The character of the town will be changed, and the established neighborhoods will change. Having lived in cities all across the nation, I see no need for such housing options in a single-family area, especially so close to a school. The demonstration project and the experimental nature of this baffles me. Studies have not been done to show a need for such housing. The impact of the city's infrastructure has not been studied. The impact to property values of surrounding homes and neighborhoods has not been taken into consideration either. Parking on Avenue E. can already be unbearable as is, and now we want to add more residents and their visitors. The feel-good idea of having residents bike and walk to work sounds great, however, in reality, it's not going to happen. The concept and the idea of apartments is not terrible, in the correct location. However, in a single-family neighborhood that is close to a school with no major business homes or colleges in town, sounds like a social experiment at the cost of existing homeowners, taxpayers, and voters. Adding these kinds of high-density homes will have an effect on the city's infrastructure. There is little public transportation to accommodate the new residents. On Avenue E., the sewage system has issues, as it is in the added stress and the new influx of residents will put it, and it could be detrimental. The city of Snohomish website states under its city council value statement that the city council embraces its responsibility for stewardship and respect for natural environment, maintenance of an intact and small-town identity, and growth that supports our historic character. It also believes that financial accountability and geographically balanced support and respect for all areas of the community are essential to creating a positive environment for families through city programs and facilities. While this is a well-written ideological statement, I truly hope that the planning commission believe it. The actions that are, and could be taken in regards to this apartment issue are gross misrepresentations against their own stated values. The decisions that are being made in regards to the restructuring of the zoning rules will have an impact for generations if the wrong decision is made. If the zoning changes are made and these structures are put into place, the financial accountability, historic character, and positive environment for families could be put in jeopardy. Please consider the long-term implications, and keep Snohomish Snohomish.
Thank you.
My own? I am. Yes, I'm Carol Brown, I live at 432 Avenue G. And I am speaking specifically in opposition to ordinance B, but it also has reflections on ordinance A. And so my comments will be directed to both of them. One of the things that really concerns me, although I agree most with everything that's been said, is parking in specific. In the residential areas of town, we've had parking issues for a number of years, and particularly in the area around the high school. Before the school district provided parking lots for students, students used to clog up the streets, and there were no room for residents. That was an issue that took a long time to resolve, and has been resolved. There's a fine parking lot for the students, and this was created through the stewardship of the school district, but also pressures from the citizens. We need to have designated parking so we don't clog our streets. We have developed parking codes in the city, and I read them this afternoon, and they basically state that for each small dwelling unit, you must have one parking spot. In speaking with the city planner this afternoon, it's been interpreted that if the proposed property on 302 Avenue E. would house up to twenty-five people, there would need to be twenty-five parking spots. Now, those parking spots are not on the street, they need to be off-street parking. There is not room for that in that particular area. I am concerned that our parking standards are under attack by these resolutions, and the question is, why? Why would we try to throw something away that has taken a number of years and a number of good thought processes from people along, throughout time, to develop standards that are reasonable and that people can live with? So, the question of the planning commission, and I know this issue is before you, not because you created it, but the city council directed you to, that's in your minutes...
That is correct.
...of January 8th. But the process is here, so we were speaking with them. But I would encourage you to not relinquish and downgrade the standards that we down at. It is not productive to the city, it is not productive to the residents. Now, it was talked about, are people going to take public transportation? I measure to say that everybody here tonight came in my car. There might have been a few people walking, but even though it is a dream that we would have more efficient transportation, we don't have. And for the foreseeable future, which I think is the rest of my lifetime, we probably will be driving our cars to and from work. And so I would encourage that this planning commission reject the adoption of these ordinances. And like I said, I'm focusing specifically on parking. There's lots of other reasons, but if any reason, don't allow your parking standards to be downgraded.
Thank you, Carol.
Chris Cortez, 313 Avenue I. I actually didn't realize when I signed my name that I was signing up to speak, so I'm going to finish Karen DeYoung's comments. Where is the research that shows there is a need in the city of Snohomish for this type of development that was created specifically to address housing issues in extremely large urban areas? Is it simply because one out-of-time developer with no ties to our community saw an opportunity to pick up a distressed property and realized enormous profits, came to you along with his newly hired architect, who just happens to be a planning commissioner, and lobbied heavily to get our city to change its current zoning laws? Our city's character and identity is based upon our history in the state of Washington, our unique downtown, our surrounding farms, and our beautiful historic homes, both within and outside of the designated historic district, and our lovely gardens. We spent millions of dollars building a new high school complex because we believe in education and in supporting the families that make up our community. We are a destination town because of our historic homes, downtown district with picturesque, riverfront views, hot air balloons, and family farm activities. People come from all over to walk down beautiful tree-lined streets and enjoy a feeling of going back in time to an era of a slower pace, quieter life, without the hustle and bustle of congested city streets, noise, and high-density living. They do not come to Snohomish to walk through town and see lovely old homes that have been converted to densely packed apartments, parking lots, garbage dumpsters, and storage units outside the buildings. One final question, what is the hurry to have these pushed through here in Snohomish? Why are these ordinances being expedited simultaneously with one creating an experiment and the other throwing the gates wide open? How does that make sense? Why does a developer get to pressure city officials to speed his concept through the process? Writing ordinance changes that address specifically the initial restrictions and determination that this project does not meet code before the public had an opportunity to weigh in? It makes a question of why having rules or codes at all.
Chris, thank you very much.